Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It is Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, seven P M., and we will start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for all power, we have everybody here this evening. Thank you for your time. I know you're all very busy. The agenda is in front of us. How does it look this evening? Good to everybody? Okay, then with that, I need a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. So by Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ross, those in favor?
I agree.
And I oppose. Motion carries. And the consent agenda is before us. Anything that anybody needs pulled out for discussion? Then if not, for the record, the consent agenda is the approval of our minutes from our April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two council meeting, the two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two library minutes, our staff reports, our commission and board reports, the claims and payroll and correspondence. So with that, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
By Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Troy, those in favor?
I agree.
And I oppose. Motion carries. And we have public forum. We have quite a few of them here tonight. And so, uh...
I'd like to suggest, or to hear, due to the number of, uh, of requests, we keep, uh, the comments to, uh, to three minutes.
Okay, so Larry has said that because we have so many of these, public forum needs to stick at three minutes. We've had comments before from people who've said, we've got to shorten this up a little bit. It does allow us a maximum time of twenty minutes for total public forum, so I'll try to go through these as quick as we can. And if you'll try to be courteous of each other, we'll get through all of them. So the first one I have, it's actually two. It's from Molly Irish. Molly, go ahead and join us. You mind if we hit both of them at the same time? Thank you for your time. Welcome this evening.
Thank you. Um, I'm just trying to address that you can't get final water bills. So obviously, on the local realtor, this is the second time. I mean, my title person, we get water bills all the time, um, because they're tied to the home. So we have to have a final water bill before it closes. Um, I have a client who purchased one zero zero seven Chestnut Street, August seventeenth of last year. We were never able to get a final water bill from, um, for last year. We did an estimate. Nobody has cashed the check from last August. Um, and then Ross, this was the person you were going to contact last meeting, who said you would be calling her back. She's never gotten a call back from you. Uh, I didn't have her check the water meter and take pictures. Meter works. Nobody is reading that meter. So, um, she couldn't be at the meeting, so that's why I'm presenting this information.
What was that address again?
One zero zero seven Chestnut.
Okay.
And if you want my, my emails from my title person, that's been sent in. Um, but we haven't been getting any response, and they have not cashed the checks, so... And since opening a title company's roster of checks, and so they, they have made lots of attempts to get it cashed and get it... And, and the bill that, that was given for the closing last August was an estimated bill. So they didn't even get a final bill for that, and now they haven't gotten a bill for almost a year. And then, um, we just had a closing on ten-thirty Chestnut. We spent two weeks trying to get a final water bill and, um, could not get one. And it was, um, Steve said he was forwarding it to somebody. He didn't say who. And then, um, you know, at the last minute, he's like, okay, here, this is the estimate. So we, you know, collected money at the closing, but we still haven't been able to find a water bill for that.
How many weeks?
Um, I think it was two weeks that we spent trying to get this one to go. In the past, when I went in for one zero zero seven Chestnut, I mean, I did come in person and really did it in person, so... Anyway, I don't know if you guys want these emails, but it would be nice if we could get this gala water bill.
I'd like to address this. It was that you have to just bring it in. Uh, we are in full knowledge of what you're asking from Molly. We ask that the realtor do not, um, involve themselves with it and let it go through the title companies, only because you're getting double work and double people doing double things.
Well, the title companies spent more time than I did in finally, I was...
Yeah, you know, I, I understand.
So if the title company is getting nowhere, I will get involved?
That, that I'm asking you and I'm asking the title company, they know that they're supposed to submit it. We didn't have anybody in the office until recently, and I have not found that check. So she may have to reissue another check, but that's for another time, because we will not do business here right now. This is your open forum time. So I'm just gonna reach out to you later.
We're tired of trying to...
Yeah, no, I absolutely understand. That was from back in August, so that was during the good time.
Okay, the next one I have, Diane Nelson, says thank you and some comments. So Diane, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes?
Um, I need to give a shout out and a thank you to, uh, Larry Julikine and Pastor Kevin Shumwin for their hard work at Cherry Hill. The peonies and the, uh, bulb garden, uh, are looking great. Um, and I know we'll all be enjoying it for years to come, so we really, we appreciate that. I appreciate it. Um, yeah. And all this, I know it was a lot of work, and, um, yeah, and so it's, it's looking great. Um, I just have a few comments, and it's in regard to the temporary positions, the temporary treasurer and the temporary deputy clerk, um, that we're gonna talk about tonight on the agenda, or you're gonna, um, address. And I just wanted to know, um, after looking through the personnel policy, will you be following what it says, um, for hiring, uh, temporary employees? That, um, it, an employee should be appointed on a short-term basis to provide continuity of services or prevent inconvenience to the public. Then under, that's under section two hundred. Under section four hundred, under appointments, uh, subdivision ten, it says temporary appointments, the council may make temporary appointments. No benefits may be given for service rendered under a temporary appointment. Then under section seven hundred, employment benefits, um, this is, it has to do with PTO. And it says all regular full-time employees will earn full PTO benefits. Temporary contracts, seasonal, part-time, and voluntary positions shall not accrue nor be eligible for PTO. And I see a shaking here. And then, under seven hundred, section seven hundred, um, seven hundred point eleven, holidays, it says, uh, only full-time employees are entitled to holiday pay. So I do have a couple of, um, payroll registers that were back in some of the, a couple of the agenda packets, and one is from January of this year, and the other one is from February. And it's, um, regarding the only temporary employee we have right now, who Steve have. And he received holiday, holiday pay, that's sixteen hours, so that's for two days, eight hours. And then in February, he received, uh, vacation and holiday. So it's not even, oh, it said, you know, uh, prorated, um, vacation, not be, um, receiving it. So I just want to know, is this gonna be consistent with the new hires, the new appointees?
And that will probably be discussed when we get down to that tonight, and we'll make sure the personality liaisons address that for you.
Okay.
So they'll make sure they get back to you with an answer.
Okay, or we could put it on unfinished business and take a look at it next time or something, too?
Sure.
For next Monday.
Yep, exactly. Thank you. Okay, the next one I have is Jerry Anlonson. This is the community center. Welcome, Jerry.
I know I have, um, I have addressed this problem to several council people, and I'm talking about the sign that is on the community center. Here's a better look at it. You know, it's, it's indissolute. So the point is, um, I know that it's on the docket, but I would like to know, you know, when. So if we can get back with, um, whoever's in charge of this, because we've asked if it could be, um, power washed or painted, you know?
I'm in charge of it, and we can talk about it whenever you want.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. It's on the docket. Thank you.
Thank you. The next woman I have is Sandra Berg. It says liquor licenses. Ooh.
Um, Taylor's Falls Concerned Citizens has been researching and fact-checking many of these things that have been going on in, you know, not City Hall. This month, actually, it was last month now, but I was tasked with looking into the two thousand twenty-two liquor license renewals. First thing I did was ask the present clerk if she had sent them in. She said yes. When I explained that the mayor, what the mayor had said at the last meeting, she said, I'm sure I sent them in. I had them all ready. I put them in the outgoing box. Uh, if that was correct, if that was correct, the renewals must have been lost in the system. But then I was confused about what you would have rushed down to, uh, St. Paul. So I decided to look at my calendar. Well, the first three months of two thousand twenty-two, especially the last half of January and the middle of, to the middle of March, Elizabeth was out of the office. First of all, she had vertigo, which took doctor's appointments, medication, physical therapy to get relief. Um, and she was working from home. Second, she thought that she would go back to work, and then her son came home with strep throat. When she was caring for them, she got strep throat. It's very possible the license renewals were overlooked. This is my thinking. So last week, which is two weeks ago now, I called the Department of Alcohol and Gaming, and I talked to Dave. And this is the conversation. I said, uh, when did you receive the liquor license renewals for Taylor's Falls? And he, he doesn't know when they were, they arrived, but they were logged in on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And I said, well, when they were due, when are they due? And he said, there's no actual date that they're due. And then I said, well, when would you like them? And he said, we would like them before they expire, which would mean it would have to be done in the month of December, so they would get that before they expire. And, uh, he told me about in, uh, twenty nineteen, Taylor's Falls didn't have the renewals in to, uh, until October. And he said, no one lost a liquor license, and there was no interruption. Then I went to the city's job descriptions, and I found that the liquor license renewals are not definitively assigned to the city clerk. Now, this is something that Ms. Soldo talked about. There's, there's total confusion, confusion in these areas. I found that, uh, it really was assigned to the coordinator's zoning. Some question is...
She can have my three minutes.
We're tired.
I didn't...
It doesn't work that way. It doesn't act, does not work that way. Three minutes.
Go ahead and continue. Go ahead and continue. Listen, go ahead and continue. We'll give you a couple more minutes, because we're trying to keep it to twenty minutes.
Okay, my three minutes are up?
You have three minutes.
They said they are. Go ahead. I'll give you a couple more minutes.
Okay, I'll tell you what the real problem is here. The problem is there is no cross-training in City Hall. When someone's out of the office, there is no one there to step in and do the work. And that is this council. That's your responsibility to have that done. Now, I'll tell you also, she did give me all of the things that she had, that she had scanned. I can't prove that they were sent in, but you people are in charge of that, not the state. They have nothing to do with it.
Thank you. Okay, we're onto the next one, which is Lynn Longnecker. It says Wannigan Days, which is coming up.
I'll talk fast.
Good to see you, Lynn.
Just getting set up.
We just got back from South Carolina.
Yeah, I know.
You're looking nice and tan.
Um, just getting organized for Wannigan Days. We're, we're moving forward. We've got a band hang for Friday night, uh, White Sidewalls. We're starting to get donations in. I'd like to get the checks into the city at some point, but I'm, you can tell me when I can bring them in. Also, there's a couple of boards and stuff down, says we have to put buttons on, uh, to get those up on lock and key. I don't know if anybody's here to, you know?
Yep, Mike Cris is. He's downstairs area. We got a sign on the door that tells people that, you know, go downstairs. Kind of limited hours while we work.
Sure, yeah, no problem. Um, now, you guys have taken care of ordering and stuff, restrooms and stuff. I want to get that out of the way.
Yep, the restrooms actually go in the city, uh, this week, and then the ones for Wannigan Days always go out just before Wannigan Days. Or typically, you have it in the Marvin parking lot or close to your area, to wherever you want.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think we have them down, up next at Walden parking lot.
Yeah, we'll put them in the same spot. Just tell us where to put them.
Okay, and, uh, see, the, uh, the Falls Chamber is now going to start taking over everything in the St. Croix area this year. And they will be assuming and doing more responsibility here in the Taylor's Falls site also for next year, but they're getting their people up this year. Um, glad to see the chamber is taken back over over there, um, and means its Falls Chamber represents both sides.
So does that mean your committee you have now will no longer continue?
There still should be a committee over here, um, to organize things and to coordinate with the, uh, Falls Chamber, so we make sure we're on, uh, on their radar, um, but I will not be doing it. And I won't speak for Sandra.
Okay.
But I won't, I won't.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Sandra doesn't want to do it either next year, but I know there's some concerned citizens here that may step up to the plate maybe and, and try to organize some things. I mean, it's pretty simple, straightforward. We got things on track. We got it financially set. You know, so the next ones aren't gonna start from scratch like we did, you know? Um, it's a big thanks to, like, uh, the drive-in is sponsoring the Friday night band. Uh, that's a big expense. Um, parade's coming across same time as usual. Uh, we're gonna do the Kids Fest on Saturday morning, and then we're gonna have Kitty Parade right before the Grand Day Parade. Uh, we'll have the band on Saturday night. I invited the goat from Romaine's. Uh, we'll have a croquet tournament on Sunday at the grade school, and we'll have, uh, the car show down here at the fire hall and food meets, and St. Joe's, I believe, is gonna have eats down there.
They are.
And we're gonna have, uh, let's see, oh, buddies and dais down at, uh, Romaine's on Sunday morning. So there's quite a few events going on, and we hope people use it. But, uh, I just want to keep you abreast. We are working on it. I haven't been up here yet. And I probably won't make it till July to be up here in front of you guys, so... Any questions, let me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask about the White Sidewalls?
White Sidewalls will be here on Friday.
What type of music is that? Fifties, I'm guessing?
I guess fifties and sixties, yeah.
Fifties and sixties, okay.
Back, uh, back when I was wearing diapers or before.
Very good. Thank you, Lynn. We really appreciate all your hard work. Your whole city did do a great job.
No problem. Yeah, any questions, communal?
Sounds good. Thank you, Lynn. And I'm on to the last one, and it is Diana Gall. It says disappointment with HPC members. So you, Diane, it's all yours.
I want to bring something to the, I want to bring something to the council and mayor's attention. I'm expressing my sincere disappointment in the way our new neighbor was treated at her home by members of HPC. She was unaware of needing a variance or any other permits before tearing down her chimney. The documentation that she had gotten from a home inspector, the chimney was a hazard, needed to come down now. She does have documentation to that effect. Instead of giving her support and the information that could help her, also welcome her to the community, she was told the chimney needed to go back up as it was. That cost would be at least ten thousand dollars. As far as I know, the women who came to her home separately don't have a degree in structural engineering, and, um, bullying doesn't get us anywhere. If you, if an inspector told me that she was, uh, what she was told, I'd have the same effect. I would tear that chimney down. I wouldn't want to be responsible for someone getting hurt. It's her responsibility, I know, to take care of her home. This woman came into town, and she had no idea that any kind of permit was necessary. She's never had a home before. She had no idea. She didn't know who to call, what to do. She just read what the inspector said and took the chimney down. And I'm just really disappointed that we didn't welcome her into the valley and into her home, that people went over there and pretty much bullied her and said, you're gonna put that chimney back up. This young lady was very, very upset. I don't think that's what we do in our valley. Which members have got...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. Was it an HPC member that told her she had to rebuild her chimney?
Yes, yes.
So it was a member, an active member?
It was two active members.
Who? It's not, um, possible to talk between each other, so we will take your information and advice. Or Troy can ask that information if we can provide it, but nothing from the audience.
Okay.
And just so you're aware of it, uh, Larry Julikine, he's the liaison for HPC, so we'll let Larry kind of handle it. I'm sorry, what was that?
Larry did a really good job of helping her, assuring her. You know, she felt so much better.
Okay, so Larry's already involved in the process?
Yes, Larry is already involved in the process and has been helping her. And she went to a meeting and got things ironed out, but the initial thing is that two people went to her and sounds like bullied her, this young woman. And that's not what we do here in our so-called Patty Valley. We welcome people. Thanks.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, that completes the public forum. We're pretty much right on schedule. Uh, I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, and I'm gonna stick right to the agenda here. I'm not gonna jump around. The first one is under old business. It's listed as number one. It's a payment to, uh, Barna Guza-Stepin. It's for the investigation for the data practices. Uh, we do have the invoice in front of us, and I want council to note that it covers the dates of March fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two to March twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-two. So that means this is not the final bill that's before us, not that I'm aware of. Uh, at this point, the amount that is due is three thousand and sixty dollars. And so, uh, I'm gonna go to personality liaisons, who I believe have been, uh, involved in this, and, uh, gonna walk us through this, let us know what we need to do, how it needs to get paid, if it needs to get paid. Uh, Ross, go ahead. It's all yours.
It's pretty much the, uh, data practice investigation. It's, it's just winding down right now. So it's, let's just call it our first half of the bill. I don't know if it's half or not, but to do the investigation, interviewing people and everything, um, was pretty much required. We had to do it. It wasn't an option for the city. Um, I guess this would come out of the general fund. We don't have a line in it for it. Um, but anyway, like I say, it's, um, we will hopefully have the final end results here pretty quick. And I, I personally, it's totally open to the public. I'd like to have, you know, be up front, fair and, you know, full disclosure. I just assume everybody sees it and won't get it, so...
Okay, thank you, Ross. And I do know that, uh, the charge is a hundred and seventy dollars per hour. Uh, Larry, anything to add to this?
Well, no, uh, just what Ross said, and, um, the invoices appear, uh, as a transparent and accurate, um, uh, use of our time and charges, and, um, you know, something that we were required to do by state statute. And so I think we need to go ahead and pay.
Okay, sounds good. Troy, comments?
Um, yes, uh, council member of guard said you, you hope that this is open to the public?
Well, I, I, I guess I don't know for the legal end of it, but I just hope when we do get the final one, that the public can view it.
You mean the final, final bill?
No, no, no. Excuse me, the final, uh, investigation report, not the bill.
This is a data breach, correct?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Other comments, Troy?
And how, how would that, how would that help us build our sense of community by releasing all this information to the public?
The public has been questioning our, you know, the, yeah, transparency and everything. So I guess the best way is to show you the result. I mean, that's a fair way to do it. Whatever we get, I just assume to give it to you. Okay, you know, so that it's totally transparent. You see what the investigator pull us.
Yeah, and I will, my, my last comment will be, I just view this as a continuation of harassment of a conscientious employee.
Okay, thank you, Troy. Uh, Mary, your comments on this?
I have none. I get what everybody else says.
Okay, sounds good. So I'm gonna call for a motion then. It sounds like we've got a majority to approve the pay request. It is from Barna Guza and Stepan. It is for the amount of three thousand and sixty dollars. It is for services provided from three fifteen of two thousand twenty-two till three twenty-eight of two thousand twenty-two, and it is paid for from our general fund. So do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
By Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ross, further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
And I oppose?
Aye.
That motion carries for the law. Thank you. Now, we're on to the next item on the agenda. It's under old business, because we've already bought the bathroom for Heritage Park. And as is listed here by Steve, uh, this is a bathroom that will not have water. It will have holding tanks. Uh, bottom line, it's gonna be delivered sometime between, uh, right now and, uh, mid-June of this year. And Steve is gonna have to coordinate the delivery of the bathroom with the digging of the hole. And so what's happened is Mike Cris has gone out. He's received three bids to dig the hole, and it's from Lawrence Creek, Ari Peterson, and Armstrong, and those are attached. So, uh, Mary, you're the other public works liaison. Comments on this?
No, I just think that, um, we just need to go with it, um, simply because it, it's what we have to do. I mean, there's just, you can't patch it any other way.
You gotta dig the hole. So, comments, Larry?
Uh, yeah, well, with the three bids, um, I know it's, uh, we're not required to choose the lowest bid.
Yeah.
But, um...
Lowest qualified bid.
Right.
Okay, but according to what we've received information, the Lawrence Creek one is most transparent, and it does give us a complete listing of things that he intends to do. Uh, the others are just, we can do this for this much, and, um, they don't really give us a whole lot of information. Rest of the council, feel free to disagree with me, but I would recommend, um, we go with the Lawrence Creek bid.
Good points. Uh, comments on this, Troy?
I would actually like to ask for, or make a motion that we table this until the next council meeting and ask for a second.
Well, unfortunately, if we do that, the bathroom will be here.
We're running up against the clock.
We're running against the clock, unfortunately. That's why we wanted to have a meeting, uh, two weeks ago, but the electricity didn't cooperate, so...
Okay, um, I would like to talk on this a little bit.
Okay, go ahead.
All right?
Yep.
On December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, this council began consideration of the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant, it's also called TAF. After meetings between city staff and ECRD C, East Central Regional Development Commission, and consultations between city council and staff, this council decided, uh, December twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, that the grant qualifying projects would be a tin ceiling for the community center, a retaining wall behind Chisago House and the sidewalk, two Heritage Park bathrooms. I'm sorry, Mary? Is this my turn?
No, your turn.
Okay. Um, let me repeat that. That's two Heritage Park bathrooms, not one. The city requested a $200,000 matching grant from the state of Minnesota, Minn. Dot. The city's match for these projects was not to exceed $40,000. The community center tin ceiling, $30,000 from the state, and $6,000 city match. Retaining wall and sidewalk, $73,000 from the state, with a $14,000 city match. Now, that sidewalk was government street to the corner and down to Dalvede.
Yes.
And the two Heritage Park bathrooms were $82,000 with a $16,400 city match. The council agreed to pursue the $200,000 matching Min-TAP grant with the final application to be submitted on or before January 8th, 2016. On January 20th, 2016, the Shisago County Roads and Bridges Commission recommended the city's application to the county board of commissioners, and the county agreed to act as a sponsoring agent. Now, the county's sponsorship included security and guarantee of the local costs associated with the project, and seeing the project through to completion. When was this TAP grant received?
We turned the TAP grant down because the cost of administration was $140,000.
There were, there were three meetings in 2016, at least that's what is posted on the website, January, February, and December. There was no mention of receiving the grant. Not until February 13th, 2022, when council member Murphy reported, in her reports, February 13th, 2017, Mary Murphy reported she heard somewhere that the TAP grant had been unofficially awarded. She also explained that she negotiated the ceiling tile contractor to $1,300 less. She had it lined up and ready to go.
Yep.
2017. Mayor Buhy also explained that he had recently completed a hobbit house on his property, and I want to congratulate you on that. The state transportation improvement program lists active projects. All three of these projects, the community center rehab, the retaining wall and sidewalk, and the Heritage Park overlooked bathrooms, are listed under project number as active grants. Project number 013596007 in their 2018 through 2021 fiscal year report. That I have here. They are both listed as active grants. And I will get into the detail, the ravine street and, and the retaining wall. This is what the state is listing, the railroad depot rehabilitation and the Heritage Park, and the overlooked restrooms along 95. There is $67,960 state dollars reserved actively available for this, for the sidewalk. There is $31,248 for the rehab at the community center, and $115,601 available for the overlooked restrooms. Now, I shouldn't say that's available, that's paid. That is in the 2020 Shisago County records. In the 2021 Shisago County records, the same projects are available and still active grants. The 2016 audit shows a balance, net change and cash fund balances of a negative $50,498. In 2017, the net change in cash fund balances is a positive $240,140. Where did that money come from?
You tell me, you're doing the research.
No, you tell me, I think you have that grant, I think you received that grant.
No, we actually turned the grant down because the cost from Bolton Mink for the administration was excessive.
Why is it still active? I think you need to tell the state of Minnesota that. Because in 2020, you paid the $36,712 matching. I know that's the narrative, that you would like people to believe, that we lost that grant, but I actually think you received it.
We didn't receive it, we turned it down because of the cost of administration. Remember that, Ross?
Yep.
Yep, I attended the meeting in Minn. Dot with Bolton Mink.
So why do we have a $240,000 plus balance in 2017?
No idea, you're talking five years ago?
I have no idea.
Go.
Okay, how about this, why do we have a negative $116,973 balance in 2018? Nothing there either?
Nope.
Okay, so we spent in 2018, the city spent $357,113. So where did that go?
You tell me, you've done the research.
Because he does that down the research?
Two hundred years ago for me to remember that far, yeah.
Right. The city's 2016 audit showed a net change balance of negative $55,498. And now you've got $240,140 in 2017, and you don't know where it came from.
You don't?
No, not really.
Okay.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
This is not relative to anything that...
Actually, it is, because one of the projects on, on this was, was the Heritage Park bathrooms, and it was for two. If you received grant money, you have to spend it, you have to spend...
We did not get the grant money.
Well, the state would disagree with it.
If you can prove that it went through the process, that it hit our banks.
Here we go with the process again.
Yep, we have to have the process.
So were you wrong when you thought that you...
I thought we were gonna have it. No, I thought we were gonna have it, but I was told that it costs $130 in fees to manage it, that would leave us only about...
$130.
$130,000.
I believe, I believe that grant money was received, and nobody has given me any indication that it has not.
Would you like to contact the state?
Probably talk to the auditors.
I actually did, these are state records.
But did you ask them, has the money been spent and delivered to us?
You, you've already paid it back. There's a $36,712.
We haven't touched any of that.
I would recommend talking to the auditors.
Exactly.
That's a very good idea, I could do that. So what we're dealing with, this was something that started in 2015, correct?
Yes.
The sidewalk that was redone in First Street, that did not use any of this grant money.
Nope, did not.
So after seven years, all we have to show for this, all this work... Well, we have the hobbit house, but I'm sure you didn't use the money, grant money for your hobbit house.
Probably not.
I don't think so.
I actually think, I actually think the city of Taylor's Falls did receive this grant.
I think we should contact the state of Minnesota to see where it cleared our bank accounts, and also...
Why don't I, why can't, why can't I come up to auditors? Because I don't understand where we don't, where did we get $240,000 in 2017?
To ask the auditors, you're talking eight years ago.
Talk to the auditors.
I don't remember that.
That's what we're doing for.
Selective memory.
Hey, Troy.
I would, I would really...
Why don't you start talking about positive things for the city?
Instead of living this all up.
Instead of coming up here and ripping us. You know, we've put a lot of hard work into this city, a lot of good things have gotten done.
I have.
And then you come up here and all your friends here come up here and start ripping us. You think we like that?
No. And by the way, I had to pull my tin ceiling off the plate because I didn't get the grant.
Okay, so I'm gonna move this forward, we're not making a whole lot of progress here. It's a matter of, do we approve this tonight, or do we vote against this? I assume that Troy might be a no, but I could be wrong. Comments on this, Ross? What do we want to do? Larry has recommended we go with Lawrence Creek, it's the highest bid. He said that based on all the information that's been presented, because he knows that we'll get a complete job, not knowing or saying that we're not gonna get the complete with the other two, but what are your thoughts on this? We're spending more money, your opinion?
The difference is only a couple hundred dollars. I think I'd rather go with the bid that they describe exactly what they're doing, so there's no mistake, there's no assumptions.
Okay.
So I'd go with the Lawrence Creek bid.
Got it. So with that, I'm gonna call for a motion, since I have a majority, to approve the bid from Lawrence Creek contracting, it is in the amount of $2,000. That purpose is to dig the hole for the city's new bathroom, which is located at Heritage Park. And fund-wise, do we want to pay for that from contingency? How do we want to pay for this? General fund?
General fund.
General fund, okay, so motion, and it's paid for from the general fund. So do I have a motion to approve this?
Some.
By Larry, do I have a second?
I'm telling you.
By Mary, those in favor?
Aye.
By opposed?
Nein.
That's four to one, that motion carries. Now, we're on to something that's really exciting. Mr. Stein, it's always good to see you. I told you it'd be really an interesting council meeting, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Yes. We never disappoint you.
Never.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
The insurance program, the Minnesota City's Insurance Trust renewed March 1st, and the policy is renewed, enforced, and I have the documents with me. We usually review this a little earlier, but first I was out of town and then somehow the power failed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not a lot of new things to report this year. I don't know if you recall from years past, but the league has come in and valued all the different city properties, and they guarantee that they will replace the buildings if they're destroyed, even if that dollar amount exceeds the insured limit, up to 50% of the limit in addition. So they want to make sure that you're comfortable that if something goes wrong in one of our insured locations, that everything's going to be okay. The property coverage is replacement cost and a $250 debt. I don't know if you recall, but in years past, we used to have to schedule city and fire department equipment, anything over $10,000, that was a real pain. And since then, the league has increased our limits, where now we only need to schedule individual pieces of equipment that are worth $250,000 or more, and therefore our equipment schedule, all, everything's covered, but there is no specifically scheduled equipment on the insured contract with the league. We have a faithful performance bond covering monies that are in the city's hoffer in case there's an internal problem, $550,000. The liability limits that you show on your proposal are probably a little confusing looking. Each year, we do have the option of removing the statutory immunity, which is at a $500,000 limit. They, they do have limits in case there are multiple incidents, or in case something ends up in federal court or for some reason misses the Minnesota statutory limits. So most of those, like I said, we're trying to be very thorough, conveying to you what the league has in their insurance program, but we are going to ask you at, you know, during this meeting, if the city wishes to keep the statutory immunity as a part of that Minnesota statute. You look like you have a question?
I will, but not right now.
Okay, okay, good. Same thing, the vehicle coverage, we have a $2 million limit. We do have each of the property locations specifically listed. We have all of the vehicles specifically listed with all their corresponding agreements. So that's, makes them greatly migrating in case you want to go there. Public officials, errors, and omissions with the $2 million limit. The workers' compensation is per Minnesota statute. We have open meeting law coverage, up to $50,000 per incident, $250,000 per year. We send proof of the insurance to the bond trust service, to Bank One, and we list as an additional insured, Jack Kramer. And we do specifically list that the economic development commission, I believe it's really a committee, but that's just the way they listed there.
So Jim, Jeff Kramer is no longer our building inspector, he retired, it's now Shisago County.
And so have they sent you any contracts, any insurance requirements?
Yeah, not seen any insurance requirements, but they, we've signed the contract and they do have it.
You'll want to, you'll want to give me at least the section on the insurance.
Okay.
For Jack Kramer?
Well, through the county now.
Through the county.
Because right now, Jack has...
To fill that back, fill that in.
Yeah, right. The, were, were, were having some new bathrooms installed at Heritage Park?
Yes, sometime in the next month.
Okay, and, and these are structures with foundations?
That's correct.
I think it's...
Yes, well, it has a subject tank, $40,000.
Okay, one, one single bathroom at 40?
It is, it's a double one with two bathrooms. So it's one big building, two bathrooms, two holding tanks.
Okay, we, we'll need to add that to the property schedule, so I'll actually, it'll be used over by, do we have that coming?
Thank you.
Two bedrooms, an upper and a lower.
The insurance costs are very similar to last year, and as a kind of an unusual event, they're actually a number of hundreds of dollars lower, which is better than hundreds of dollars higher. Every few years, we talk about the possibility of adding the umbrella, a million dollar umbrella, and that would sit on those liability limits for both the vehicles and general liability, that whole list of liability limits, and would put an additional $1 million of coverage on there. Now, assuming that this council keeps the statutory immunity, you'd ask, why do we need that? The two reasons are, if something ends up in federal court, the federal court will not recommend the Minnesota statute. The second reason is, it, it has at one time been thought that with the right circumstance, that somebody could break the statute, although there's been some, around the state of Minnesota over the last couple of decades, there's been some really big incidents and the statute has actually held quite good. Should the city decide to go with that, it would be another $1,165. I bring that up a lot every three years.
You know, I was gonna say, do you have a recommendation for us?
Well, I can never recommend no. I would say that cities of your size rarely take this coverage.
Okay, good example. Okay, what else do you have for us?
I'm here to answer your questions.
Go ahead, Troy, you have a question?
Thank you. Last April, April meeting, we received an invoice for workers' compensation. We paid the premium for the upcoming year, and I, that does match. That's right, right on, right on, exactly.
I think the rest of it does too.
Well, that's, that's what I have a question about, because I only received one, and I'm assuming the other council members as well only received one, three pages from the invoice from Minnesota City.
They were built separately, they were conscious, and the balance of the insurances are actually built on it, two different computer systems.
Okay. Well, my question is, because there was a payment that was received for 996 prior to this, it was on this invoice and it was not itemized?
996.
$996. And I noticed there was, LMC says there's a regular premium option and a retrospective rating option?
Sure.
Okay, so what, are, are we going to the premium option? Is that the new?
We have always, we've always had the, the standard option for the workers' compensation. The league makes a number of programs available. You can have $500,000, $2500, $25,000, $50,000 deductible, and they will reduce the premium. They will also do a retrospective rating plan, where you will pay a premium, put it on deposit, and they will look back and say, you know, did you cost us more money, or, or, you know, how does that work? We never recommend that when the premium is less than $100,000. Those are, those are, you know, if we stepped up the deductible to, to the next level and we saved, you know, $136 bucks, it just doesn't make sense.
Right.
That, this, the city doesn't have enough base premium to aren't going any other direction.
And I guess I can go to LMC for this, I was just wondering, on this invoice that we received, like I said, it was one of three pages, and we only received one page, and there's a previous invoice balance of 996, and then a payments received of 996.
Sure.
So I guess I'm wondering, can you tell me what that would possibly have been?
You bet, you bet. Now, I, I wasn't prepared to talk about previous billings.
I understand.
But, but if you go to the work comp page... Oh, I, I didn't even... The workers' compensation is based on the projection of payroll into one, two, three, four, five, seven different categories. Waterworks, sewer disposal plant, firefighters, clerical, municipal employees, elected or planned officials, and general maintenance. Okay, we tell the league at the beginning of the year what we expect those payrolls to be. Once the year is completed, they run an audit, and if you guessed too high, you get one... Once the year is completed, they run an audit, and if you guessed too high, you get one back.
Okay.
If you guessed too low, you get an additional billing, and if you have an additional nine hundred and ninety-six dollar billing from the work comp, that's for the audit for the previous year.
Okay, so our plan hasn't changed, it's just, it's just an additional, it's from the audit.
It's, it's reconciling.
Right.
March first, twenty twenty, uh, twenty-one to twenty-two policy term. And the projection for the current year, each of those categories is ten percent higher than last year.
Okay, so it's, it's like a reconciliation charge.
You're exactly right.
Okay. And I know, I think this is the League of Minnesota City's invoice, not, not yours, but it would be nice if. That if I had some sort of description of what that was. That was my own question.
Okay, anybody else have any comments for Jim?
So, you're exploring every year.
Jim, we thank you for your time and all your hard work for our city.
Oh, no, we're not done.
No, I know, I was gonna say, I think I gotta have a motion, and then I gotta have a signature, and am I correct?
You are, exactly.
And I think we'll have to have us, first of all, uh, accept your report and then do the uh, monetary limits, is that what you're looking for?
Exactly.
Okay, can I do that now?
Sorry, dear, love your money.
We've been friends for a long time. Okay, so I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the report. It is from the Stein Agency, from Jim Stein. It is for the city's insurance for twenty twenty-two, and then to further move to not waive the monetary limits on the municipality tort liability established by Minnesota State statute for sixty-six point oh four.
So.
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
By Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, and you need a signature.
I do.
Got it.
Should I leave this here, or should I drop it, mail it? This is the actual contract itself.
I can think of.
You have a question, are you gonna read that?
Yep.
Is there a test on it? Thank you, sir. Everybody, thank you too. Okay, I'm onto the next item, which is a request for light poles, and I believe this is uh, Public Works. Uh, there's some information here, there's uh, two attachments. Uh, the first one is a recommendation from Mike Criss, and the other one is Andre Electric proposal for these. And as it says in the report from Mike, uh, we average about two streetlights being destroyed every year. Uh, there are the decorative streetlights, uh, sometimes we catch the person and have insurance, other times we don't. Uh, so what Mike is recommending is that we have some of these on order, actually in our Public Works building. The reason for that is it takes almost a year to receive these. And so, it would be nice to be able to have them, as soon as they get renovated, put them out the next day so that our downtown looks presentable at all times. Uh, the cost of these two poles, they're expensive because they're custom made, uh, they're almost thirteen thousand dollars for two poles. So, uh, Mary, your comments on this?
I, I like that, being proactive, being reactive. Um, it, it costs insurance money and time to replace those as well. So, if we can get a, a, a get-go on that, I, I approve that.
Okay, and I, what we're talking about is one nine footer and one fourteen footer?
Yep.
Because we have two different sizes.
Yep, he's mentioned that in the past, so it'd be nice to have something.
So, here's my question for you, what funds should we pay for it from? We, it's not a budget item.
I didn't see this beforehand, I mean, um, I would probably recommend, um.
I don't know that we have funds in the Public Works Fund to pull from?
No, we don't. Um, I'd like to probably go with the general.
Okay, all right.
I don't have an, a, another recommendation.
So, not a problem. Uh, Ross, comments on this?
Yeah, you have to get out the general fund, but yeah, we do have to have a couple on hand. As you can see down, down, there's missing poles, it looks terrible.
Yeah.
But it's, what else to do with insurance, usually it covers it all.
Mm-hmm.
Temporarily, we'll have to.
Right.
Cover the costs, I'll pay.
It is paid back, so that's why I said I didn't know what a legal account would be.
It's a, it's tricky when insurance reimburses you for this stuff, so. Uh, comments on this, Troy?
I have no comment.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, they're, you know, they're an important part of the city, and uh, you know, it looks bad when people drive through and see light poles not.
Yeah, with the orange cone on top of them, so. Okay, so it sounds like everybody's in agreement, I'm gonna call for a motion then to approve the request. It comes from Mike Criss, our Public Works Superintendent. The purpose is to purchase one nine-foot decorative light pole with the head, and one fourteen-foot decorative light pole with the head. It is purchased from Andre Electric, and it will be uh, who, based on this proposal that he submitted, for twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars paid for from our general fund. So, do I have a motion to approve this?
Some move.
By Ross, I got a second by Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we're onto the next item, this is for a photocopier. And uh, what's happened was, when Ross and I came into this city to uh, find out what shape we were in financially, bill-wise, the first thing that I discovered was that we were out of toner for the photocopier. Uh, so I ordered the toner, it comes from Loffler, it's under contract. Once we received it and it was plugged in, two days later, uh, we got an error message that says, replaced wrong. So, I contacted uh, Loffler again, and said, here's the problem, can you repair it? They said, well, you have two problems with that machine. Uh, number one is it will not do a scan to email, its software doesn't support it any longer, and number two, that thing is a boat anchor, it's over eleven years old. You're lucky, they usually last five years. And so, what they provided us with is a bid, and it's a government bid. So, that means lowest price that we can purchase it. Uh, if we decide to purchase it, it is five thousand, seventy-eight dollars, seventy-four cents, or we can lease it on a five-year agreement for a hundred dollars and six cents. Their recommendation was that we actually purchase it, because they said you get a lot more than five years out of those copiers. So, anything over five years, you're ahead of the game, because you want to keep leasing it, you can keep paying the dollars. So, this comes from Loffler, again, there's a nice big packet here with all the information. There's two options that the council may want to discuss. Uh, the first one is to add an additional drawer down below, so that way it gives you three feeding trays instead of one. The current copier has four trays. Uh, the other thing is it has a auto stapler on it, which is something that we could say, yes, we want, no, we don't want. The old machine has a stapler on it, it's broken. So, uh, within this packet of information, you can see the full amount here. It shows at that feeding drawer, which is called a cassette feeder, that's nine hundred, seventy-two dollars and eight cents. If you want the stapler, it's another eight hundred dollars and three cents, pardon me, eight hundred and three dollars, eighty-eight cents. The actual machine itself is just a little over thirty-one hundred dollars. So, then it becomes a matter of, do we want to buy it, or do we want to lease it? So, with that, uh, I'll go to the Public Works Liaisons, because they're the ones who use it the most as far as staff. Uh, comments on this, Larry?
Well, uh, as a personnel liaison, I would recommend that we purchase this, because to lease it, it's cost us an extra thousand dollars over the course of the lease. So, purchase would be my way to go.
Okay, Ross, comments on this?
No, I agree, we should purchase it, um, as far as the accessories, you know, I don't know, whoever's had in the past is fine, but yeah, purchase it is best way, obviously because of the last one, we came a long time.
Yeah, eleven years is a long time. And I had talked to um, staff, our former uh, city clerks, and they both said they would recommend using a stapler. I always said, well, but when we had a council packet and we printed them out, it made sense to have an auto stapler. But since we have, our council packs are on the computer, I wasn't sure if we wanted it or not, so that's why I'm throwing it out there. So, um, comments on this, Mary?
I um, have my eighty fine comments. Um, the stapler is not needed.
Okay.
Um, the additional tray is not needed.
Oh, so we're gonna go with just one tray?
You, if they have, if they're asking for two trays and we're, or more than two, two trays, and we've already got a four tray.
Yeah? So, we're gonna go from a four tray to a one tray?
Then it, they're gonna charge us nine hundred dollars for a tray?
Yeah, the tray would give you three trays instead of one tray.
Okay.
And they said that would allow.
Well, that's what I'm saying, what is, yeah, exactly, but um, if, if we can't get for, tit for tat, you know, if we can't get four drawers already for a price that we already are spending on this one, I would, I would say go with it if you have to, but you don't need the stapler, and Loffler is in the um, business of selling you the highest value product there, one of our vendors as well. And um, I would say that uh, we just need basic, we, the amount of time that you use a permanent stapler is, you know, once a month for four.
Yeah, no, I agree, so we should pull the stapler out, in your opinion?
Yep, and I do, I do believe the purchase, um, definitely, rather than the, the um, leasing. And then also, if, if, just to give you an idea, if the stapler runs out or breaks, there's a fee for them to come and fix it.
Uh, that's within the contract. So, there is no additional fee for it.
But they still, they still charge in emergencies, there, there's a fee attached to it, believe me.
So, does this five thousand, seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, does that include the attachments?
Yes, that's everything, so if we want to remove the attachments, you reduce that amount.
So, this, what you're looking for at thirty-one hundred dollars is just a one tray and a manual fee?
Yes. So, if you add the other nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, you'd knock out three trays with the auto fee. So, when I looked at it, I said, I think we should have the three trays with the auto fee. Do we really need a stapler?
There, there you.
However, you guys.
I'm okay with that.
Be, I'm fine with that.
I guess I'm okay with that, I just don't believe in the stapler.
Okay, I agree with that. Uh, Ross, your opinion on this?
I think we should get the trays in case we're dealing with different sized paper.
Okay.
I don't know about stapler, I don't, I don't deal with that, so.
We have a ton of.
Just the trays are fine.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, comments on this, Troy?
Uh, just wondering about the service agreement, does it change between a lease and a purchase?
No, it's exactly the same.
That was what my other consideration.
Yeah, exactly the same.
I apologize for taking your consideration, Mary.
No, no, all, all due respect, it can happen.
Okay, so what we're looking at is uh, four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents, and that will include the uh, auto fee tray, but not the stapler. Everybody comfortable with that?
I think I'm getting there.
Uh, four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars, sixty-five cents. Okay, now, the question is, how do we pay for it? Pulling a lot of money out of our general fund, but we can't go without a photocall here.
Have to use the tamper.
Uh, if you can figure out a way to use the tamper, tamper tool. Okay, everybody's comfortable with this then? I'm gonna call for a motion then to approve.
Was that funny?
Pardon me?
Was that a funny?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was hilarious.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a motion then to approve the purchase of the Canon Image Runner Advanced DXC three eight, uh, two-six I copier, it is purchased from Loffler. It will be at a cost of four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars, sixty-five cents for purchase. And note that this price is based on the Minnesota State contract, and it is paid for from our general fund. So, a motion to approve?
Some.
By Larry, a second from Mary, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item that we're on to is the Gopher. And there's a lot of information here, looks very confusing.
May I interrupt for a moment?
Sure.
I have to change the tape.
Oh, go ahead. Ready to go? Okay, so what we have, uh, in a lot of information, and I'm told it's really not that complicated. It's really a matter of that Gopher CSG is doing a refinance. And with the refinance, we, I've actually uh, attached an email from Patrick Kelly explaining who he's been in contact with. There's been some research done on the bank that's involved, because sometimes when you get overseas banks, that type of thing, you're dealing with uh, some tricky situations. The important thing, in my opinion, is that we gotta make sure that the performance bond is in place, because that protects the city. Now, they are not going to decommission this site, not at this time, but if they were to decide to decommission the site and they didn't have the funds to do it, that is the purpose of the three hundred and thirteen thousand dollar performance bond. So, what we're looking at tonight is, we need to approve the project letter of credit. It's issued by RoboBank for three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We have to also acknowledge that the duplicate, that we have a duplicate original letter of credit. Uh, they asked for the conditional use permit, a copy of it, but unfortunately, we were not able to find all of the information that they were looking for on this. So, they have provided us with a uh, replacement letter within the packet. The other thing that we need to do is approve the signature letter on the termination certificate that is from MUFG Bank, and then to uh, sign or make that contingent upon RoboBank issuing a new letter of credit to the city. So, again, a lot of confusion, a lot of reading on this, it's really a matter of, they're just refinancing the site. They're not tearing it down, the city has to make sure that it's protected with that performance bond, so that's the main thing. So, uh, with this, uh, Ross, I know you've read through this as well, comments on this?
It is confusing.
Yeah, it is, it's a lot of information.
Yeah, literally just changing from one bank to the other, whoever's gonna be paying the bill if something goes wrong. Well, when they do the uh, removal.
Decommission.
Yeah, but um, like I said, when the information, it's, it's a large bank, you know, it's, that's what they deal with. So, I guess I don't have an issue with it. Um, we need to have the bond for sure.
Yeah.
So.
Yep, and Patrick Kelly put in here that the bank is a Netherlands bank, and it has an extensive, an extensive background in agricultural business. And so, a little bit of research into the bank, that was my concern, was, well, how do we know if the bank oversees? Is it a real bank, are they a problem, can they financially afford to provide that bond? And the answer is that I was given is, yes, they do, so. You're okay with this, Ross?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, comments, Mary?
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay, uh, Larry, comments?
Well, it's important to move forward to protect the city.
Okay, uh, Troy, comments?
Uh, a couple of comments and questions, which I, I don't expect to have answered tonight.
Okay.
But I think they should be put out there.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, if we are in the interest of protecting the city, first of all, when did this change from a performance bond to a decommissioned bond? Are, are we, are we calling it what it should be called?
You know, that's a good question, I've always called them surety bonds, and I'm not sure if that's the correct terminology or not, but the attorneys called it a performance bond, so that's why I use that.
Because originally, it was a performance bond, and that, and then um, Patrick Kelly referred to it as a more of a decommissioned bond.
Right.
Um, we're dealing with a, how many acres is it, five acres? Let's see, yeah, fifty, fifty point five acres. Um, or five megawatt community solar garden. I, firstly, I don't think three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars would be enough to cover a decommission of a solar farm of that size, so.
Yeah.
Um, that's one of my concerns. Um, my main concern is, what happened to the letter of credit?
It's supposedly in a file, but nobody can locate that particular file. And I believe that was from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, somewhere in that area.
So, because in, in our letter asking for a copy from um, the Mitsubishi Bank, we said it was either lost or stolen, um, so.
Yeah.
It could still be in the file?
Yes.
I guess my question is, whose responsibility is that?
City.
To track that?
City staff.
Okay, would it be the zoning administrator, the clerk, or?
That would be the city clerk, all files are responsible by the city clerk.
Um, including, including having to do the zoning.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, this could go back, uh, this could go back to um, a previous zoning administrator, could it not?
Yes.
And it could also be his responsibility.
Correct.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
The other question I have is the language that we're using in this uh, letter of credit. And I, I apologize if this is long, it sounds confusing, but it is. Uh, this letter of credit shall expire for all purposes on the earlier of, one, one year from the issuance of such a letter of credit, plus any renewal period provided under the terms such a letter of credit, and B, the date that is the seventh anniversary of the original issue date. So, my question is, what's the difference between an issue date and an issuance date? What date are we putting at the top of this template?
It's a good question, it's probably a good attorney question.
I asked him, he didn't want to answer.
He didn't want to answer, or he didn't know the answer?
He didn't, he, he said Chad will be here to address it.
Oh. Okay, we'll make sure we get an answer for you.
Because uh, with the, what this letter says, and your letter uses the seventh anniversary, so his letter uses the seventh anniversary of the original issue date, so I'm wondering, when does this expire? Is it one year from the issue date, or the seventh anniversary, and, you know, by seven years? He didn't want to answer me that question either. Um. And the other question I have is the conditional use permit, we do have the original one, but we don't have an extension. So, how do we extend a conditional use permit? Do we do it with another conditional use permit? Shouldn't we have?
If we have one, I don't believe you need continually extend it on it, because we already have. If we have one, I don't believe you need continually extension on it, because we already have it.
We have the original?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we extended this for one year because it wasn't, it, the, it wasn't completed in the first year. So we extended the CUP for one year.
Okay, I don't know, we'd have to find the documentation of it.
Okay.
All done?
My other question was about the status inquiry.
Go ahead.
It was January twelfth, twenty eighteen. Um, we never filled that out. I've contacted Hanover, they don't have, it was, it was a empty document. So, when Hanover sent us a status inquiry, um, January twelfth, twenty eighteen, it, it wasn't completed and sent back. And I guess, I'm wondering, who would we, I'm trying to blame the previous zoning administrator for that too?
Twenty seventeen?
Right, yeah, okay.
No idea.
Okay, that was it, just had some questions, I want to make sure I got them out there.
Got them, thank you. Uh, other comments? Nope, okay, so we have three things we need to do, we're gonna need three motions. The first one is, I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the project letter of credit. It is issued by RoboBank in the amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ross, second by Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three to four to one. The next motion is a motion to, uh, approve acknowledging the duplicate original letter of credit. It is to MUFG Bank and then authorize the signatures on that document. So a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ross, second by Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, four to one. We're onto the last one, which is, uh, we need a motion to approve authorizing my signature on the letter of termination certificate, but that is subject to the RoboBank issuing a new letter of credit. So do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
By Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ross, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, four to one. And we're onto the next item, which is, uh, looks like this is yours Troy? You want some, uh, tires for the fire truck?
Yes, and I want to thank the mayor for working with me, we had, uh, field approval for these tires, uh, for the rescue truck. Jake was concerned that with the supply chains and the shipping and everything being so slow, that the tires wouldn't come through, of hope, we'd actually miss our opportunity is what he was concerned about. That, uh, once it got approved, because the meeting was canceled due to the, um, power outage. He was concerned that it wouldn't get, so anyway, um, he asked for field approval and, uh, we did, I did tell him he can go ahead with that, the price for the tires was four thousand seventy-five dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay, and do we know what fund we're taking this from?
Yes, that would be maintenance, equipment, repair, I think it's four forty or four oh four.
Thank you, okay, uh, comments on this Mary?
No, we, um, don't.
Okay, do we have any idea how long it'll take to get the tires?
Um, I believe they were ready, they were ready and waiting.
Okay.
That's what he, that's the way I understood it.
He didn't want them sold to somebody else.
Somebody else.
Got it, thank you, okay, Larry, comments?
No, the truck needs new tires, they, they need to get them new tires.
Got it, Ross?
Uh, yeah, we've done another truck when they get older, so.
Yep.
For safety reasons, so.
Yep, and I'm in agreement with this, and yes, uh, Troy and I did field approve this to expedite this. So I'm gonna call for a motion then to approve the purchase of the tires. It is for the fire department rescue truck, we are purchasing them from A One Tire Service. It will be at a cost of four thousand seventy-five dollars and sixty-two cents, paid for from Fund Four Oh Four. So a motion to approve?
Aye.
By Troy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ross, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Almost done, we're onto the next item, which is the temporary treasurer. So this is a personality liaison, so if you want to bring us up to speed, what you doing?
Um, Jake, what, I can go, go ahead. Um, yes, in the, uh, in the absence of our full-time clerk treasurer, um, it was necessary to, um, take some action to get the nuts and the bolts of the city, uh, running again. Water bills, uh, payroll, and, um, and, uh, and paying bills, uh, that were due. And we had a previous, a former clerk treasurer, um, offered her, uh, services on a part-time temporary basis. So we have Mary Tomnitz coming in on Saturdays for a couple hours each weekend to, um, get things in order in the office. Um, we, I guess you could call it a field decision to bring her on at thirty-five dollars an hour. Mary knows the office inside and out, um, think the water bills are currently going out. Sometimes they're going to the wrong people because the mailing list had not been updated and we're in the process of doing that right now as well. So, um, we felt it necessary to get the city running again and Mary was there to help us out, so.
It is this for the, uh, part-time temporary treasurer position?
Yeah, part-time temporary treasurer.
And this is Mary Tomnitz?
Mary Tomnitz.
And what did you say the amount was per hour?
Thirty-five dollars.
Okay, and now are there any benefits that go with that, since it's a temporary part-time individual?
No, it's a straight, um, hourly rate way.
Got it, so no PTO, no vacation time, no sick time?
Correct.
No, nothing?
Correct.
Just thirty-five dollars an hour? Got it, Ross, anything to add to this?
No, no, Mary knows the city inside and out, does a great job. Yeah, I like to see she comes weekends, actually a couple nights a week to try to get everything caught up.
Okay.
Um, she's worked hard on it, there's a lot to get straightened out, so.
Okay.
Um, there is a few issues with water bills, which, you know, we're still dealing with, but we'll get them all done here, hopefully in the next few weeks.
So do we know approximately how many hours per week she's going to be working?
I'd probably say, probably twelve a week, maybe a little bit longer.
Twelve hours per week? Do we know how long? Two months, four months?
Until, until we resolve our present sort of status.
Okay, so we don't have a timeline as far as, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, 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 so, I know, we don't really have.
So it's open-ended at this time?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, comments on this Mary?
No, uh, I mean, yes, um, I agree with it, I, I was gonna say no problems with it. Um, I've been in the office probably four hours a week as well to kind of supervise the venue system and keep the laptops up to snuff and things like that. So, um, just last week I did five hours of trying to do the, um, deposits and ready the deposits for the water bills, they went out on a time demand at this, this time. Um, you are definitely right, there was at least seventeen or eighteen accounts that, um, were from last year that person has sold the property and it hasn't been updated. And it's not just a change of, you know, from Mike Bluehite to Mary Murphy, you have to inactivate an account and you have to restore an account, um, with that information and the meter reading. So, um, I've been in there to help them with that as well and, uh, they're doing a fine job.
Are you charging us per hour?
Do you want me to? It's more than thirty-five dollars an hour.
No, it's just a question, I'm kind of easy, I don't know how much hours in the city, so.
I'm teaching you.
Okay, so, um, anything else?
No, um, and thirty-five dollars is the going rate, if you were to go to a temporary agency, it's at least that.
Okay.
And that person who's working in that position would not get that thirty-five dollars, they'll only get like seventy-five percent of that.
Okay, and so are we at a point now where they're actually paying the checks using venue? Which means I no longer have handwriting checks?
Very, very, very near, they're all, they're all coming into the pipeline for that, but right now payroll supersedes all of that, they're all dated and, and we know how they're going.
So do we know if I'll need to handwrite checks anymore?
No, you won't need to.
And I've been making photocopies of everything that I'm writing?
Hand, hand receipt.
Hold on, okay. All right, uh, thank you Mary, uh, Troy, comments?
Um, yeah, I said when we put the clerk treasurer on administrative leave, we'd be responsible, or those who voted in favor of that would be responsible for the, uh, for the public service. We know the financial consequences of that decision and, and I, I think Mary's stepping up to do the best she can to help out. Um, having said that, I think these taxpayers, the people of Taylor's Falls deserve the public services that they're, that they're paying for.
They're getting handwritten notes, by the way, just so you know.
Very good, okay, sounds like everybody's in favor of this, so I'm gonna call for a motion then to approve the hiring of a temporary, uh, part-time temporary city clerk treasurer. It is Mary Tomnitz, it will be at a rate of thirty-five dollars per hour and it will be paid for from which fund personnel liaison?
Probably have to come out of the general fund because there's no special line item for this, it's something that doesn't come up every year, you don't pay it for it.
Got it, okay, so this is paid for from our general fund, so, do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we're on to the last item on the agenda, this is, uh, once again Ross and Larry, this says part-time temporary clerk and I say, assume the same rules are going to apply, which is no PTO, no vacation time, no sick time, no benefits, none of that kind of stuff, it's just a flat hourly rate, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's all yours Larry?
Well, um, I mentioned that Mary Tomnitz is taking care of the basic, you know, um, nuts and bolts of getting, you know, the city up and running again. But, um, she did request, um, some additional help and she recommended a Molly Nelson who is, um, you know, taking care of organizing the filing and, um, just getting everything, you know, organized so that Mary can go and do what she needs to do. Uh, and so she would be, um, hired on as a part-time temporary deputy clerk at, at a rate of twenty-five dollars an hour with no benefits.
Okay, and do we have any idea how many hours that might be per week as well?
Probably around the same as Mary's.
Okay, all right, anything to add to that Ross?
Um, yeah, Molly Nelson does have background in bookkeeping, payroll, accounts payable, so she's not in.
Does she have a background in auditing as well?
Uh, yeah, actually she does, yeah. Um, but anyway, she's doing a lot of filing, trying to get everything organized, straightened out, um, goes back always, so. It's a lot of work, they're doing a good job, I think.
Okay.
Hopefully not too much longer we'll be able to snuff again, so.
Got it, great, thanks Larry and Ross, uh, comments Troy?
Um, just a comment that I remember that our previous, uh, clerk treasurer, who is now on administrative, requested from the council, uh, will be, uh, before the council. Other than that, I want to make sure that, um, the people of the city get the services that they deserve and are paying for.
Great, well said Troy, thank you. And, uh, note that, uh, these two individuals are working a total of twenty-four hours a week total. Yes, turn.
I'm overseeing.
I wasn't in the lead yet.
Okay, I'm overseeing them and yes, we are doing the job in twenty-four hours plus my five, six hours donated per week. So, and we are doing the city's justice and you're getting what you need and wherever there's a discrepancy, you're getting a handwritten note.
So we're catching up on water bills, correct?
Yes.
And I believe deposits are being made weekly?
You've got one for tomorrow.
I know, I've made three runs to the bank so far, so, it's my pleasure, so. Okay, so it sounds like everybody's comfortable with this, I'm gonna call for a motion then to approve hiring Molly Nelson as the part-time temporary city clerk. It is at a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour and this will be also paid for from our general fund. So a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, we've hit everything, and so I'll just be really quick on an update here. Uh, the website, uh, we have not launched the website yet, that's been intentional, we're looking for, uh, quality before just putting the thing out there, it's a very, very large website, so it's not like creating a small little website to advertise for your small business, it's quite massive. Um, I actually have Mary Murphy, who is an IT person, who is assisting with this, thank you for that Mary. Uh, we have pictures that are being added to it, I've actually seen a look at what the website looks like, even though we haven't launched it, it's very impressive. Uh, as far as the other thing, also you received in your packet, a report from the, uh, Department of Revenue that talks about the sales and use tax, it is a, uh, you're not paying it on time. And we've got, uh, it says repeated failure to pay your sales and or use tax on time. It shows from, uh, June of twenty twenty, September of twenty twenty, September of twenty twenty-one, December of twenty twenty-one, and there's a penalty that goes along with not paying your sales tax on time. This is primarily for businesses that pay their water bill, they pay sales tax as well. And so we have a penalty that's happening, so I was put in touch with an individual via Patrick Kelly by the name of Dan Johnson. And, uh, Dan discussed it with me, he said that since twenty nineteen, we've actually received eleven letters of late notice, and he said if I instructed him to, he would put us on an annual reporting instead of a quarterly reporting. So I took the liberty of saying, put us on annual, he agreed to back us all the way up to January of twenty twenty-two, so at this time we're not late. However, we are still paying a penalty because we have got, uh, the past twenty-five months, we have had late notices, so it's a twenty-five percent penalty. Not a lot of money, but it's a penalty. Uh, the other thing is that the auditors will begin at the June meeting, if you have questions, call them ahead of time Troy, you're certainly welcome to, otherwise you can ask them questions when they're here next month at the meeting. The last thing is that I will be recommending the stewardship award at our June meeting. So, a little late on that, but better late than never.
Do I have any chances of getting that?
Pardon me?
Do I have any chances of getting that?
Of getting the, uh, award?
Is that another funny?
It's gonna be a close race, it'll be close, so, yes sir?
If I may.
Yes?
Um, I'd like to apologize to my colleague at the table for, um, you know, jumping on them like that and also apologize to the gallery, that's not how I prefer to conduct my business.
Correct.
Thank you Larry, you know, sometimes we do that, where we kind of lash out, um, believe it or not, we're trying to do what's good for the city, which is throwing all the grit at times, so. Okay, that's all I've got, uh, Mary, anything new?
No.
Anything else new? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So, by Mary, I have a second, by Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.